Could you all please rise? Call the meeting to order. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. And here comes our vice president. So we're gonna let her take it from here.
Thank you, Laura. I apologize for my tardiness.
We're at the approval of the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda given.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we will move forward.
We need to vote on it.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, let's vote on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so the agenda is approved. So now we are at the topic of our special meeting, the proposed Feller Wetlands disposition. I will hand it over to Dana.
Thank you. So this evening, we have a guest, Denise De Farm, our counsel from Pacifica Law Group. And Denise is going to help us go through PowerPoint with all the information about the proposed transfer of the wetlands to the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. I do have two pieces of written testimony from community members who could not be present that I will read to the community when we get to that part of the evening. And we can go ahead and just get started.
Okay, great. Well, I'll stay here just so I don't have my back to anyone. And hopefully, you all can hear me. Let me know if I need to put my volume up a bit. But we'll just start with this hearing this evening is the second public hearing on this proposal. It is not a required public hearing, but it's one, given the length of time from the first public hearing, that we thought it would be a good idea just to refresh, give an overview of what the transaction looks like, and then be able to hear more from the community. So moving to the next slide, this is a rough visual, just to orient everyone. And so you will see in orange, with my very crude handwriting, where it says ELC, that is the Mary Feller Early Learning Center property. There is nothing happening with that property. It is remaining as it currently is today in district ownership and as the early learning center. You'll see outlined in blue are parcels owned by the school district and primarily for Belfair Elementary School. Nothing is happening with that property outlined in blue. Then we go over to the left and the property that is outlined in green, which includes tidelands. Those are what we're calling the Feller Wetlands parcels. There are five of them, all contiguous. There is a narrow strip next to the early learning center, which serves as the parking area that serves primarily access, public access, to the trail system on the Feller Wetlands. So that's the orientation of what we're talking about. So going to the next slide, the history of this and what we're talking about today, just drilling down a bit further, is about 90 acres, five parcels, and they are largely encumbered by wetlands, tidelands, and of course, a trail system. The Watershed Project Center also sits on these parcels that we're calling the Feller Wetlands parcels, but it is very close to the early learning center. So it's immediately adjacent. And then, of course, that less than two-acre parking area parcel, which is used for parking access to the trail system. These parcels were bequeathed to the school district under the Samuel B. Feller will, and they had an important restriction that they be used perpetually for recreational purposes. The parking area was subject to a trust created under that same will. That trust is now terminated, and the district is the fee owner. And that parking area is encumbered by some DNR covenants that limit the development on it as well. Going to the next slide, we will talk a little bit about what this does not include. And again, just for clarity, it does not include the parcel that is where the early learning center is located, which was given to the school district under the will of Mary E. Feller. That parcel has a restriction that's a little bit broader. It says it must be used for school and public recreational purposes. And if not, it reverts to the heirs of Samuel B. Feller. We know, again, that is used for the early learning center for school purposes, not a part of this transaction, and it will be continued to be in school district ownership and used for the early learning center. So just an overview of what is not included. The history of the Feller Wetlands parcels is that they have been used primarily for passive recreational purposes since 1972. The district at one time considered trying to activate those recreational uses with ball fields and consideration of a gymnasium. But because of the ecological conditions, development is just not possible, with the exception of a small area that allowed for the Watershed Project Center to be developed with funds from the state legislature as well as a grant from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. And you'll hear me say RCO a couple of times. That is what that's referring to, that Recreation and Conservation Office grant. The district currently uses the classroom located at the Watershed Project Center. And the public uses, the district also periodically will use the exhibit center, but the public also has access to that center. And the public is the primary user of the trail system. And over the years, the district has found that maintaining and operating that 90-acre property with the trail system, the public access, and the various ecological constraints has really been a burden on district general fund resources. And importantly, this is not a typical burden that a school district would have. It is outside of the general K-12 programs and purpose. And so because of that continuing burden and the district's desire that it be stewarded by someone who has it within their primary purpose, the district started thinking about a partner who would help with that. So the framework for identifying that partner was to find a partner with resources to be able to maintain and improve the public asset, maintain the Feller will restrictions to perpetually use that for recreational purposes, and also to allow the district to continue to use and access the classrooms in the center and to continue to allow the public to access that center. Those conversations have led to a period of a period of about five years of negotiations and discussions with the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. They were identified because they were one party that did step forward, but also because of their history of conservation within the area. They, as many of you know, they are the steward and manager of the Union River Wildlife Area Unit. And so as a result of those continuing conversations, the district adopted in January of this year, almost a year ago now, the board adopted a resolution declaring the property surplus for purposes of exclusive school needs and authorizing the district administration to enter into negotiations on an intergovernmental transfer with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. In February, following that surplus resolution, the district held, after proper advertisement, a public hearing that's required by the statute to consider disposition of the Feller Wetlands property from the district to Fish and Wildlife, but consistent with the provisions of the Can I have you roll back one, Jackie? That's all right. But provided that that conveyance be consistent with the Feller will restrictions, with the RCO grant and the public access requirements, and with the district's perpetual use rights to use the Watershed Project Center classroom. In March of 2022, the district engaged in both public and follow-up conversations with the Skokomish Indian Tribe to determine whether the tribe was interested in a potential partnership. And those conversations continued throughout the summer. We talked directly with the tribe, sent them the framework documents of what the conveyance would look like, giving them an opportunity to explore whether it would work for them. And they ultimately determined that it was not something that they at this time could be interested in pursuing. So that brings us to tonight. And now, Jackie, we can go here. So we'll go through the terms of this proposed disposition. And what I've done here is I've copied and pasted on the next two slides directly from draft documents the restrictions that will apply. So the district would convey to Fish and Wildlife the 90-plus acres through a quick claim deed that would include reservations and a reversion clause. I see now that I have a typo in that PowerPoint. So, but it should say reversion versus revision. Essentially, what the restrictions are is that they, Fish and Wildlife, would use the property consistent with the Feller will restrictions and continue to use that property for the perpetual recreational uses in perpetuity. The other thing that we have added, which goes beyond the Feller will restrictions, is to preserve the existing wetland trail system and to afford public access over that trail system. So that's an additional requirement for the use of the property. In the event those two things do not occur at any time, the property, without any other action, would revert back to the school district because of the noncompliance with the restrictions. Going to the next slide, we have also incorporated into the documents the reserved easement right in favor of the district to be able to access and use the classroom in the Watershed Project Center during school hours and also to have access in coordination with Fish and Wildlife to the exhibit portion of that center. So that is a critical component for the district to continue to have those rights. And so that will be a recorded easement that is on the property. Other terms of this disposition are that Fish and Wildlife will establish an advisory group with seeking at least participation from at least three residents of Mason County to serve on that advisory committee. They will, prior to closing, get written confirmation from RCO indicating that RCO has accepted the transfer as consistent with the grant obligations. And RCO's concern is that that trail be maintained and that the public continue to have access, and also that the Watershed Project Center be maintained. And Fish and Wildlife will bear all of the costs and expenses with respect to the conveyance. In terms of closing costs, the district will not have to pay anything. And then, following closing, Fish and Wildlife will bear all costs and expenses related to maintaining and operating the property, including the Watershed Project Center, with just one minor exception that the school district will provide custodial services to the classroom for purposes of its own use. So this is just a side-by-side comparison of where things are today under school district ownership and what things would look like once conveyance occurs. Compliance with the Feller will restrictions and that perpetual recreational access are the key provisions, and those would remain unchanged under the conveyance. Public access will be strengthened under the school district's easement and the deed restriction that requires continued public access. With regard to the Watershed Project Center, the district will continue to have access to those classrooms. The public will continue to have access to the exhibit center. And then the maintenance of the property will, the district will be relieved of that continuing burden, and that will shift over to Fish and Wildlife for sole responsibility. So those are the big picture terms. Next steps, of course, are after tonight's public hearing would be for the Board of Directors to consider a resolution to authorize the transfer from the school district to the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And that is anticipated to occur on December 15. And then, if the board authorizes this transaction, closing would occur in early 2023. So that is, I was just gonna go for any questions.
Yeah, what, could you tell me again, what happened to the interest of the tribe in this?
Yeah, the tribe explored and thought very carefully about whether they wanted to come into the negotiations and be a potential partner with the school district. And so over a period of months, I know that following their conversation with the board in March, they considered it. We sent all of the transaction documents over to them in draft form, because they weren't final yet, and basically said, here's what we have negotiated with Fish and Wildlife, just as the general framework of how to transfer this, ensure public access, ensure maintenance of the property. And they considered it, and we talked with them a couple of times about different parts of it. But ultimately, I think they just decided that it just wasn't something at this time they could take on. And I don't know, Dana, is there more information?
The last communication we had from the tribal chairman was that at this time, it did not fit in their multi-year plan and budget to be able to look at taking this on. And so that they were, they wanted us to know that that was where they were.
I do have some questions. What is the process for reversion? So say, okay, we notice or somebody in the community notices that Fish and Wildlife is not following these, this clause that we've laid out here, you know, and it kind of makes sense, okay, revert back to us. But how, like, how is that declared? And, you know, that could potentially be contentious if one side says, okay, it comes back to us.
Right.
Someone says no, it's fine.
Right, yeah, no. It is, the process, I would suspect, would first start with conversation, particularly with the advisory committee, and then probably at the same time with Fish and Wildlife to first notify them that noncompliance is occurring, give them an opportunity to correct. And then if they don't, the process at that point would be seeking enforcement of that deed restriction. So the deed is recorded on title. It is enforceable by the school district. And so it would require potentially litigation to enforce it. So there is, you know, the potential of a dispute to enforce. But I would suspect there would be everything before that to try to avoid that.
Right, right. But this gives us legal standing to
Correct.
litigate if we need to.
Correct.
You mentioned the parking is under DNR covenants. What, could you elaborate?
Yeah, I can. Most of this information came from the appraisal that was done when the trust was terminated back in 2016, I believe that trust was terminated. DNR provided some funding for improvement of that area is what I was able to glean from the documents. This, it's interesting, because it's not recorded on the title or at least the title report that we have. There's no DNR covenant recorded. But going back through, because we have so much information on these properties, going back through the files and reading through the appraisal report, they were able to identify, based upon some DNR grant funding, that there were restrictions on future development of that land.
And potentially, that parking lot sits, there's a culvert, so it sits over potential fish passage. And so that would be part of it.
Yeah, exactly.
And so under strudus, that parking lot is not, would not be transferred over? Is that what we're saying?
No, that narrow portion of the parking lot in the map that Denise provided would be transferred over, but it couldn't be like a store.
Right. It really can only be used for the parking lot. You could not build a structure of any kind on it.
And when we say Watershed Project Center, we're talking about the classroom. The space is down there. And so my son goes to Barnacles and Bees preschool, which has a lease or an agreement with the school district to use the trails in some of that space for that organization and others like it. What would the process be like for them? I know it says that it would be open for public ask access, but what does that process look like? Does it look like them going to the advisory group? Does it look like them having a point of contact with WDFW?
Well, with Barnacles and Bees, we have talked with WDFW about that being ongoing. And that is, that is an expectation that they have. But I wouldn't, they'd probably just write an MOU like we have with them.
They would need to get a, we have, we've talked about them. They're aware of it. They would need to do a new agreement directly with WDFW.
Okay. I feel like my last question is kind of not necessarily for you, but in your estimation, what do you feel like is in it for WDFW? I mean, this is taking on a lot.
It is taking on a lot. I think that they value, I don't want to speak for them, but just based upon our conversations over the last year and a half with them, with, well, with the most recent negotiation team, they value their stewardship generally of that area, and they see it fitting and complementing with the adjacent area that they steward. And so I think the ability to streamline the management more so than anything is what draws them to this property. And Dana, I don't feel I want to add anything there.
And we thought that their representative was going to be here tonight, but their property kind of surrounds the wetlands. Well, there's our property, Salmon Center, and WDFW all around it. So then that becomes a more uniform piece of land that is being under conservation management.
And so it's like keeping siblings together.
Yes.
Could you say, could you run over a bit about the board again?
That was interesting.
It's gonna be
Yeah.
People that manage.
Right, they have committed to establishing an advisory committee.
Yeah, definitely.
And this was the school district's request, and it was response to public input desiring to have some local voice in how that property is managed. And so the agreement was that they, and they have these advisory committees in other areas. So it wasn't a foreign concept to them, and it was fairly easy for them to see how this would work. And so the agreement is that they will have this advisory committee that will be a part of their South Puget Sound wildlife area. And that, and so then we went a step further and said, it's great you're gonna have an advisory committee, but we want to have local voices. And that is when they committed to seeking at least three people from Mason County to sit on that advisory committee.
So they don't have to specifically be Belfair?
No.
Or Allen?
Correct.
And how did they choose these people?
Currently, I sit on the South Puget Sound WDFW Advisory Committee that has a huge piece of property. And they advertise, you know, because it goes all the way down to Niskwali. And they have, they advertise for interested people, and you apply. That's how you get on.
How big is the committee group? How big are the committee groups?
Well, not everybody has shown up for any of the meetings.
Really?
But for that whole big area, there are about a dozen volunteer board members who could show up to those meetings. And then we also have people from WDFW that are at those meetings.
For a group, for this committee, being a smaller piece of property, I imagine, would be a smaller group or three people out of 12? Or do you have any sense of what that would be?
I'm not sure. I wish Tom were here to help.
But that will be there, up to them to decide.
So the general idea is that they would come, these three people would come from Mason County?
Correct.
Well, and I think another person that at least before COVID was sitting on the board that we all know well is one of the people I have a comment from tonight, Herb Gerhart. So he was also on that advisory committee, so.
And just to be clear, I think it is, I just want to make sure, there is not a maximum of three. It could be more than three, but the intent is that they would seek at least three.
Yeah. That's interesting. And this is an advisory, hold on, an advisory group within this South Puget Sound Wildlife Area Advisory Committee?
Correct.
Interesting, okay.
Now, and I'm sorry to come in late. On that committee, it's only for Mason County can sit on it? Or there can be Kitsap County?
There can, our understanding is that there can be others.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking like Pierce is here, and we've got pretty close. I've heard of people talking in South Kitsap about it, so.
So there's no real harm that this committee could do?
They're not, they don't make decisions.
We don't make decisions on the committee that I sit on. We listen to and look at things and visit properties and
Give input.
Give input, and WDFW makes all the decisions.
Okay, good.
Do you feel like your voice is heard when you make input?
I have one question. So as of right now, it's free to enter and use the trails. Will that be maintained? Or will we need a discover pass or some sort of pass in order to access the property?
I think unfortunately, this is one that I don't have the answer to specifically, but it's a good question. And I, once again, I wish Tom was here. Tom we're referring to is from WDFW.
And he had planned to be here this evening. In fact, he asked Jackie for directions again earlier, so I'm not sure.
Could be like flags for these couple of questions and
We can flag those, but as you go back to our agreement, our agreement says that the public still has to have access regardless to the property, that part of making this transfer is keeping that public access open.
Yeah, I realize that. But it's one of those things I was thinking, well, everyone has access. They just need to be able to pay a fee to get in. So I wasn't sure how that was going to be interpreted.
And that's gonna be there, probably their decision. But we can ask that question.
And I know, because then it feels like, well, that's how they get their money to maintain it and do the things they need to have happen on it.
But if you remember, early on, when we had a donation box and strongly encouraged people to pay to be on the property too, to help pay for the maintenance. So it wouldn't be a totally new concept necessarily either.
That's true. Was there very many donations in that box?
Occasionally. Sometimes there were pretty good ones, and sometimes there weren't.
I think there would be an argument for both sides on that, I think.
So are we at the place to open the public hearing?
Do you guys have any other questions?
No.
Turn it over to you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That is gracious to give it back to me. Well, then we will open the publicly, wait, I need to just also public hearing. Okay, I'm doing that right now.
I do have two statements that were submitted that I would like to read to the board. The first one is from Herb Gerhart. And he says, since I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting regarding the Feller transfer to WDFW, please accept this email as my comments for support of this transfer to North Mason School Board and WDFW. I fully support the transfer of the Feller Trail System and properties to WDFW and would like to see this transfer take place ASAP. Herb Gerhart, Belfair, Washington. At you also, the board received communication from Van Beskirk, and he included previous comments that he sent to the board over the last several months. I'm going to just read the most current one into the public reading of the record, but all of these comments are part of the record. I would like to emphasize the following parts of comments made on February 17, 2022 in support of those modifications to the disposition terms. I would request that the school board require WFW to advertise for and establish and maintain a specific Feller Citizen Advisory Oversight Committee made up of local citizens and stakeholders of the North Mason School District, not Mason County citizens as part of the larger South Sound Advisory Group. With all due respect, the WDFW has a hard time with maintenance and enforcement of its existing and enforcement of its existing statewide facilities, and it is not a local group. I think we can all agree that Mr. Feller's intent was that a local entity watches over his and his wife's gifts to the local community. Require the WDFW to verify with the RCO that the Feller Trail, which was breached ten years ago, was built with RCO grant monies. The Feller Trail breach has destroyed the freshwater and stormwater settling pond for the acres above and the existing Feller Center and parking lot. This stormwater settling pond was designated as such and referenced as part of the original nineteen eighty Feller E. Environmental Impact Statement. The breach has also denied access to a portion of trails that were built with RCO grant monies, guaranteeing public access in perpetuity. The taxpayers of this district have spent thousands of dollars on affix to this situation. Both the previous school administration and the current administration have commissioned two separate deliverables and paid for both. Please place a condition on any transfer to the WDFW that the freshwater pond and trail be restored to their original condition and state. Thank you, Ken Van Beskirk, and please let me know how the North Mason public can apply to be on the advisory group."
Okay, and do we have any comments from...
At least so you can hear me. This is pretty much the same thing I said at the last big book.
Remember to tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don LePere, retired dentist here in Belfair, former school board member, and Bobbinger on the trails. Recently, I watched Ken Burns' documentary about national parks. And as a child growing up in Cincinnati, we never visited any of the national parks, but I was fortunate to grow up in Beboito Woods, an outdoor education center maintained by the City Cincinnati Parks and Recreation Commission. My mother took us kids on nature hikes at Beboito and also at the family farm three miles outside of Oxford. When the Feller Wetlands trails were developed on the property that Sam had donated right behind my dental office, I was in second heaven. I've been a volunteer at first with just a backpack blower to keep the boardwalks clean of leaves in the fall, along with Tom Mars. I've been more active since the Feller Estate ran out of money. I've been helping to maintain the trails as best I can, especially keeping the trails handicap accessible in memory of my cousin Tom, who died from complications from muscular dystrophy when we were both twenty-one years old. I really hate change. But this makes sense in that WDFW, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, can get money from the legislature to preserve and maintain this trail system. The North Mason School District cannot get money from Olympia to maintain the trails. So I'm in favor of this, and I will continue volunteering on the trails as long as God bless me. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments and any others to read?
I've read everything.
And then, we will close the public hearing. And then, we are not making decisions tonight. So then, do we have any other decisions?
Yeah, I have a kind of question about one of Ken's comments about the freshwater. What is the current state of what he's talking about with that freshwater ponds? And is it even possible to do what he is asking, revert back to freshwater?
The pond was a man-made, created freshwater pond that was created by a dike that was built way back when, I think in the thirties. Way back when. And that dike was breached by storms and systems and has now allowed salt water in and has now been identified as salmon habitat. And so, in the current climate, you cannot make a freshwater pond out of salmon habitat. You have to continue to allow the salmon to move in and out of that pond. So returning that to a state as a freshwater pond would not be approved by the multiple state and federal agencies that you would have to get involved up to, including, you know, like the Army Corps of Engineers and et cetera. It just wouldn't happen.
That's why I wanted to kind of make that known.
Yeah, that's a too little, too late kind of thing.
I had a question. Back to that advisory committee, what was the most people that are gonna be sitting on that altogether?
We don't have a ceiling for that. We don't know of a ceiling that WDFW has in mind for that committee. And I don't know, Dana, is there experience that you've seen?
Yeah, my experience has... There aren't, you know, it's a much larger area that the one I sit on covers, and so they have to have people from all over the place, from the different communities that are involved. And they've done a really good job of having people from each community. So since this is a smaller community, I would imagine. But I think we will, because you're gonna consider this at the board meeting next week, we will make sure that someone from Fish and Wildlife can be here to answer that question or gives us the answers in writing prior to that meeting.
Okay. It's my... I would love to see at least twelve people on that. And I would love to see something that I agree, I think, that Ken's saying that three of the people or a few of those people that are strictly from the local area, like a portion, be from here in that big group, if we could. You know, maybe we only get two people, which I seriously don't think that will happen. I think there'll be a lot of applicants from inside. But sometimes that's just talk. But that's my personal feeling and professionally in seeing on all the sides. It would be neat to see that, but just a random comment. Okay, then, we are meeting back here on December fifteenth at six-thirty regular time, no snow, God willing. And we will adjourn.